Aye.
Caballero.
Aye.
Trent, absent with notice. Jimenez.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Butler, absent with notice. Motion carried.
Thank you. Can we please stand up for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Can we please have a roll call to establish quorum? Please sit here. Jimenez.
Here.
Steinfeld.
Here.
Gonzalez, here. Palace.
Here.
Caballero.
Here.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Jimenez. I am the school board president, and to my left is Dr. Mary Havas. Bear with us. We're going to have two open meetings and two closed meetings, just so that you know, we're having the public hearing. I don't think we need any interpretations or translations, so buenas noches. Public hearing, and notice is hereby given by the Board of Education of Berwyn South School District 100 in the county of Cook, state of Illinois, that that tentative amended budget for state school district for the fiscal year 2025 is unfiled and conveniently available for public inspection at Laverne Education Center, 3401 South Gunderson, Berwyn, Illinois, 60402, from 8:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., beginning on May 2, 2025. Notice is hereby further given that a public hearing on said budget will be held, or is being held today, and this hearing is here at Heritage Middle School, 6850 West 35th Street, Berwyn, Illinois, the Board of Education, Berwyn South School District 100, in the county of Cook, state of Illinois. So we're here to approve, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, to approve it because we had it in open, but if anybody has any public comments, please go to the podium. Okay. See you in none. Can we please have a motion to... Yeah, that's it, right? To adjourn public hearing and reconvene into open session.
All motion.
Second.
I'll second.
7:04 p.m. Ironay Jimenez.
Aye.
Palace.
Aye.
Steinfeld.
Aye.
Caballero.
Aye.
Gonzalez. Aye. Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
All right. Good evening. We are going to kick off the superintendent's report with a science curriculum update, so I would like to invite up Teresa Adelvia, Samantha Schuman, and Lindsay Cindy, who are just going to give an overview of our science curriculum.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lindsay Cindy, and I'm the Director of Learning Management and Assessment. So just as a reminder, right, the vision in our district is to provide our students with that rigorous and personalized learning, and our science curriculum is a huge piece of that. And so today, we're going to kind of give you a few updates and some information regarding how science is going here in District 100. So every year, our fifth and eighth grade students take the Illinois Science Assessment right around the same time that they take IAR, and this is the Summit of Assessment for just fifth and eighth grade. Those are the only grade levels that are tested in Illinois besides, I believe it's 11th grade, but that's changing now with all the new ACT things. And so we don't have data from every grade, just fifth and eighth, because those are the two that are tested. The results of the science assessment here, this is taken from the school report card, and you can see that as a district, in 2024, we've grown almost every year. We had a little bit of a down last year, but every year since 2021, we have grown. Prior to 2021, the assessment was significantly different than it is now, and so that's why you don't necessarily see all that data. They've increased the number of tests from one to three. They've provided us some more information. They've changed the scale. There's been a lot of up and down, but you can see that we are making progress. We are not quite at the state level, but we are pretty close, and you can see that we're making more gains than the state is, which is great for us, and so it's pretty exciting. You can see here the difference between fifth and eighth grade, and this is one of the reasons and the things that we'll talk about here in fifth grade. Our eighth grade is above that state average. Our fifth grade is still a little bit below, but overall, we're almost there on that state average. Again, this is where you can see the growth year by year by the grade levels, and you can see fifth grade has been a little bit stagnant, and then we did see a bump up this year, and, sorry, last year, and ideally, we will be continuing to see that with our curriculum.
Hello, everyone. I'm Teresa Adelvia, Assistant Director of Curriculum and Instruction. So this year, along with implementation of Amplify, we really wanted to streamline and organize our implementation of Mystery Science in first through fifth grade. So we have had Mystery Science as a resource for many years, but it was never really, you know, paced out systematically, knowing who's doing what units, and so as we organized our Amplify units, we went ahead and organized our Mystery Science units as well and made sure that there was time in everybody's blocks to instruct this science program. And so Mystery Science is a hands-on program. It really encourages students to discuss what they're learning about, and as you can see, the students are really manipulating things. And so in order to get started, we made sure that we provided professional development for teachers, even though we have had the program, just to make sure everybody's starting off with the same information. And then we also made sure they had the resources that they needed. So we did print out the binders, that they had the paper lessons, and then we ordered the material kits, so that they had everything they need to really implement that.
Amplify Science, not to be confused with Amplify ELA and CKLA, which are ELA curriculum. It is the same company. We implemented Amplify Science four years ago now, and so our middle school students have had this curriculum, which is a literacy-based science curriculum. Students are doing a lot of reading and a lot of writing and a lot of discussing like scientists. It is a phenomena-based curriculum, and the next-generation science standards recommend students learning through the phenomena-based model, and that's also how Mystery Science is structured. The idea that we present students with a problem or something that sparks curiosity and interest, and then they discover a solution or an explanation to that through their science lessons, rather than just definitions and terminology and facts. The students are discovering and doing science. And so here, you can see some of the Amplify 6-8 science projects. Students were required to create, in that bottom picture, a baby incubator, and that was helping them understand the transfer and preservation of thermal energy. And so they had to build it. They had to have, there was cost analysis. They had to justify their thinking, and they actually invited teachers and other students to come in and evaluate that and see how they did. So a real-world solution, something that they had to figure out how to do and physically build, in addition to the writing and the reading and all of those things. So it has definitely helped our students in the science achievement, implementing Amplify, as well as in their reading and their writing that we're seeing in their ELA progress. It does blend the hands-on activities with literacy-rich activities, as well as a lot of interactive digital tools. So the students are doing lots of hands-on science, but they're also using some simulations and some things along those lines where they can interact and test out their hypotheses. Part of Amplify Science is also, there are interactive engineering internships. So they're given a role of a scientist or a community member of some type that they have to solve a problem using their scientific knowledge and figure things out. And so it really gets the kids doing the science, rather than just learning about it.
We also have STEAM as an exploratory class for students K through 8, and with STEAM, we have the Program Project Lead the Way. And so we have the Launch Program in K5, and then 6, 8 uses Gateway. So what the STEAM teachers do is those units really take what the students have been learning through the science courses with the NGSS and focus more on those engineering practices and do more hands-on activities, and so you're seeing a lot of students, you know, building models of things. They do a lot with flights and, you know, really looking at how they can manipulate the science and apply it. And so this year, we're really, really excited to announce that we were recognized as a PLTW district, and this is just for giving our community access, an opportunity for our students to have these experiences, and so we're really proud of that this year, and really proud of all the work that our teachers have done. Something that's coming up for next year that our STEAM teachers are really excited about is SAM Labs. And so our K5 STEAM teachers will have this additional resource on top of PLTW where they will be able to focus on coding. And so this program is aligned with NGSS, and they can actually connect, they have so many lessons that can connect what they're learning in PLTW and work through more of the coding aspect of that. And so it has different levels of that. It could be very interactive, that first image on the top, where students really are seeing the different tools that they can manipulate, and then it can progress up to, you know, the script and all of those other programs. And so we're really excited to see how this will be. I think the kids are really going to enjoy this process, and just having the opportunity for our kids to just be exposed to these types of programs, I think can, you know, really inspire them. Maybe this is a career that they want to go into or something they like to do for fun, and so our kids are going to enjoy that.
Thanks. So Samantha Schuman, Director of Instructional Innovation, but this is another program that... So the Girls' Saturday Science Program has been in our district since about 2013 when I was at Piper School. We, there's research out there that shows that girls' interest in science really drops off by the time they hit middle school, and so we wanted to provide our students with opportunities for additional science enrichment outside of the school day to ensure at that elementary level that their interest in science continues to grow. And so we established this in 2013. It's a free program. They actually get a grant from Torado Baking Company that pays for it, so it's nothing out of our pockets. And what, now that I've been able to, fortunate enough to move to the district level, we've decided to bring this district-wide. So for the last year and a half, we've been working with all elementary schools and inviting fourth and fifth grade girls to participate in these sessions. So this past year, we had two five-week sessions. They took place here at Heritage from 9:00 to 11:00, and very similar to what Lindsay and Teresa were talking about in terms of hands-on learning, that's really what this program is all about, too. It's about teaching them about the scientific method, the process going more in-depth regarding what is a hypothesis, how do we ask questions as a researcher. We talk about the difference between constants and variables, so we know that our students thrive on getting more opportunities to access their background knowledge, as well as expand their vocabulary, and so this is designed to do that. So the students spend two hours working through an experiment where the, there's two students that come from North Central. One is typically a science major, and one is an elementary ed major, and so they give the students a demonstration on a particular science topic. They don't tell them what the variables and the constants are, but then the students kind of go through and set up three separate tests or lab scenarios to figure out which is the important variable. And so they test different science concepts throughout, and that's typically the first hour, and then the second hour or 45 minutes is all about just different STEM experiences that they can have, where they're cutting, they're building, doing all kinds of fun stuff. In between there, they bring a snack. The girls get to have a snack from the students from North Central, and they get to talk about what college life is like or science careers. So it's not only providing enrichment opportunities in science, but they're also getting to ask questions about what it's like when they get older and are starting to make some of those life decisions. So we're fortunate enough to have a teacher liaison here in our district that has supported over the last few years, Ms. Lovero, and so I wanted to share this data because I know at Piper, I was always impressed how our scores continued to grow in science, and so we knew that this program could help enhance as well. And so if you look at our 2024 data, so these are, any students who are the fourth graders, right, don't take the assessment. So all of the fifth graders that participated that year, 75% of them met or exceeded, and then the following year, we opened up to more students. So this year, 87% of the girls that participated met or exceeded. So there was really only four students that were still in that approaching area of the 36 that have participated in the last two years. So we're looking forward to continuing to expand this program. We look at students who are interested, but also expanding it to just more girls to provide additional access. So looking forward to seeing these numbers continue to grow. All right.
Okay. So moving ahead and thinking about our future, as Lindsay mentioned, we want to really focus on supporting our fifth graders, and so one way to do that is we started to implement Mystery Science earlier on, and so we just want to strengthen that implementation. And so we made a few tweaks that the teachers recommended in the scope and sequence so that it is aligned with the units that they're working on. Amplify, as they taught this first year, they saw some connections that could be made where the students can, you know, talk about it in literacy and also talk about it in science. Our kindergarten students will also be getting exposure to those Mystery Science lessons through their STEAM class, along with the Project Lead the Way units. This past spring, we worked with our middle school to just look at our scope and sequence again with the change in the schedule. We wanted to make sure that, you know, the units that they're teaching, we can still teach that within the time that they have for next year, and just had the time to look at the standards again and look at the assignments that they have and just come back together and regroup. As we continue to get our ISA data, we're going to just dive in. They are going to be giving us more reports than they have, and so we're excited to dig in and look for more trends, and then we can use those trends to make more decisions about what instruction looks like, any other changes that may be needed, and then, of course, continue to provide our teachers with any professional development that they may need so that they can continue to support our students. And that's it. Any questions?
Wasn't sure if you needed to recognize me, or do I just ask? Okay. Caballero, thank you so much for that presentation. This is great. I was able to look at it ahead of time, and the kids look so engaged. I just had a couple of questions. How many minutes is one science class, and then how many classes per week?
In the middle school, it currently was one every other day for 88 minutes. With the new schedule that we're implementing, it'll be 42 minutes every single day, so it'll be more consistent for them. For elementary, it's different based on, you know, the teacher's schedule, but it's at least three times a week for 20, 30 minutes, depending on their schedule, so it is more consistent.
Very nice. Thank you. And then I just had one more question. The Girls' Saturday Science looks very cool, and I love that it's on a Saturday and the girls are choosing to be there, right? So how do you invite the girls, and then how do you choose the girls? Is there an application process?
Great question. So we reach out to the principals, who then talk with the fourth and fifth grade teachers. We start off with, we wanted to try to keep it to about 20 students, just because it's a manageable number, but I could foresee this growing as we go from there. So we start with students that we know are interested, but at this point, it's really about enrichment and giving access to all students, so we're hoping to expand the program now that we kind of have a process in place, but there isn't any, like, we don't collect any data or any information ahead of time on students, so yeah, hoping to expand it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
One other, oh, wait. One other item to highlight, too, is some of the schools I know have science fairs, and those are usually a lot of fun and pretty well-attended, so.
Yeah, I think our middle school this year had a combined science fair, I think the first annual, so yeah, we'll keep you posted on when that is next year.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions, and I appreciate the presentation as well. I'm also happy that it's also based literacy-based curriculum. I have one question that I, maybe I'm the only one who doesn't know. What is PLTW mean?
It's an organization, Project Lead the Way. It's the name of the program. Project Lead the Way.
Thank you. So I was going to also ask a question about how students are invited. So my next question would be knowing that statistically, and I think it is a magnificent program for all of our girls, but I know that statistically, girls of color usually do not go into those areas, so how are we targeting to include our girls of color in this program?
Great question. And like I said, we kind of open it up to all, so that's definitely something we can look deeper at, but we don't, we're just inviting everyone to be part of the program.
And I love that, that we're inviting everyone, but I think sometimes we have to be a little bit more strategically and be in regards to inviting them maybe or informing them more about what is, how is they going to help them. The reason I know this is like, both my daughters went into the science and tech, and most of the time, they are the only Latinas, the only females in those jobs. Like, I know both of them have been in the field for a while, especially my oldest one. She's the only one of color and a female. So I know that we need to be increasing that and be strategically thinking about how to include them. My other, and I do love the Mystery Labs, my last question, and it's based on the assessment. So I'm happy that you're exploring the Illinois Science Assessment Report to identify the areas of need and areas that we grow. Having had taught fifth grade this year, and when the kids finished the assessment, they were very concerned that the questions were mostly about math and then science, which I believe that they were, they're a combination, right? They are probably interconnected. So how are we connecting the math and the science to help our students improve on this assessment? Because I do believe it's a hard assessment, and we may not put as much emphasis as we should have.
Yes. So one of the things about the assessment is it doesn't directly test your content knowledge, and so if you haven't necessarily learned about ecosystems, you can still answer the questions about ecosystems, because it's asking the questions where you're reading data tables, you're looking at graphs, you're interpreting conclusions. And so those are the pieces that are part of both Mystery Science as well as Amplify Science, that are where we are seeing our students grow in that ability to interact with that data. Doing the labs, collecting the data, recording the charts, talking about that, that's where they are taking advantage of that. In regards to the connection with, directly with math, especially at the elementary school because they're teaching math and teaching science, now that we're in our, we're going to be starting our second year of full implementation of Mystery Science, that's an area where in our math PLCs, we can have those discussions about the connections because those teachers are teaching both. Middle school is a bit more challenging, and that's an area that we're going to continue to explore in regards to, especially because they're only tested in eighth grade, and there are things in sixth and seventh grade that they don't cover again until eighth grade, and so how can we use the information, the specific information from the assessment to inform what our teachers are doing and how to continue to reiterate those skills across the board?
Thank you. And I did say that it was the last one, but I just remember one. Do we have this curriculum in both English and Spanish for our dual-language students or only Spanish speakers?
Yes. Both Mystery Science and Amplify Science are available in English and Spanish. Our dual-language program doesn't teach it in Spanish, but it's available for students who may need that Spanish support.
And the program that is on Saturdays, is it also being provided in Spanish for our Spanish speakers or only in English?
Not at this time. It's just English at this time.
Thank you. That's all.
If I can just add to the previous question that you asked about increasing girls into science, one of the things that I personally value about District 100 is that we have been very strategic and have received a lot of support from all of you to integrate more curricular resources specifically for our district. 83% Latinos, 75% low-income. As you've known, we brought you a science curriculum four years ago. We made sure that our Mystery Science, we were investing in not only pacing it out, but also in providing all of the resources that teachers would need to give our students access. We want to make sure that they have that. Project Lead the Way, we're investing in that, and, you know, as needed, purchasing more units. So we can't do that without your support, and so we really appreciate that piece, because all of our students should have access, especially in a district such as District 100. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Also, you'll remember, just a few months ago, the board adopted the Vision 2030 Resolution, and a lot of what was just discussed here is really talking about the goals of Vision 2030, as well as exposure to career exploration. And so as we continue to expand in science, it's very exciting. Just a few years ago, our kids were not getting as many opportunities in science, and it has grown significantly, and we're seeing the results of that, and we so appreciate the investment of our staff. We appreciate the investment, as Bee said, of putting funding into that curriculum to support science across our district. So thank you again for your presentation. All right. Our just-of-facilities projects, obviously, you can see just by walking through, we have a lot going on in our facilities this summer. So we are working here with our construction manager, FH Passion and Archon. We meet with them weekly to get updates on everything that's happening across the district, which has been really valuable. We've been so pleased with their partnerships and the communication. So Emerson is obviously getting their unit events put in. All the units have arrived or shipped, and so we have a few that we were waiting on, but so far, we're on track. And as you probably noted as well, the roofing project is in progress here at Emerson as well. Heritage gym floor is looking fantastic, so that has been redone this summer. It's almost there, right? We still have another code or two, but it's, so we'll be able to take a look at that. And Heritage is also getting a lot of carpeting redone. As we've mentioned before, Heritage and Emerson are normally used for summer school, so they have not had the opportunity for a lot of projects and updates and deep cleaning, and so that is what is happening here this summer. We also have, if you remember, that we received funding from the maintenance grant from the state, and so we are doing the exterior door projects at three schools. So Pershing is almost complete. The doors are in. There's some mechanical things that need to be added, and then Kamenski and Heritage Doors are also scheduled to be done in the next week or two. So those projects are all progressing, and we are on schedule and going smoothly so far. 3,000 Ridgeland, the footings of the building are complete in most areas. We are waiting for a plumbing hookup, a water line hookup that needs to be completed before we can start the footings on the second side of the building, but the foundation for the west end portion of the building has already been put in, as well as partial on the south. So again, lots of communication and collaboration between multiple people to get to be working on these projects, but we've had really effective communication and things are going smoothly. So we will continue to keep you updated on summer projects. Any questions on that? Okay. We did have five FOIA's this month that we have shared and submitted. Our dashboard, we are really, all of our attendance is in there from the last month of school, but also we are making some nice progress on registration for next school year. Our goal is to get everyone registered by May 30. That is a tough goal to meet, but it's still always our goal. But we are still, you know, working to get some more students who started registration but haven't quite finished it to get registered, and then we'll have to get everybody else get everybody else in August. But we, our numbers are looking pretty good, which is helpful for us in planning for next school year, when we can get as many students registered prior to summer as possible. And I will turn it over to Jenny for the financial report.
Thanks, Mary. Our bank balance as of today is 71.1 million. Our revenue for the month of June to date is 3.7 million. On the screen and in, and in Board Book, you'll see the cash flow short report. Revenue for the month of May was 3.4 million, for year-to-date of 62.6 million. Expenses for the month of May were 5.9 million. That includes our bond interest payment. And our year-to-date expenses are 58.2 million, for a fund balance of 67.9 million. On the next slide, you'll see our grant snapshot. As we're winding down the year, grants are coming in, and we're finishing off some of the grants. The, and you'll notice when we started doing the budget for next year, the CARES grants at the bottom are all going to start falling off. A lot of them already have. The next thing that I have on the budget is the amended budget for FY '25. There were just slight changes from last time. If you want to go all the way down to the bottom of the second page. This is, also in Board Book, is the very, very large 32 or something-page Excel. This is the easy, simple version of the Excel portion of that. Within the Excel portion, we kind of talked about it during Finance Committee today, it goes into very detail of your fund, your function, your object, of all the different account codes. This kind of is your snapshot, and this is what's also in Board Book in the long form. Also, on Board Book, you'll see the resolution, and I will let, I won't steal your thunder, Wendy. I'll let you talk about that when you get to it. Right now, we are, we are right on target budget-wise for the FY '25 budget. The hard part about doing it in June is you're working off of the May financials, and you still have some of the June expenses. So, you do your best estimate of where you think you're going to be when you do your budget amendment, and it kind of trues up what your original budget was in September. And it also allows for the updating grants, the extra grant money. In this budget, we also had a significant increase in interest from our investments, so that accounts for those pieces. And that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mary. President's report, finance.
The Finance Committee met today. We reviewed the amended budget for fiscal year '25. We also discussed a resolution that is on the consent agenda today, and this resolution is to transfer money from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund for $6 million. And the reason that we need this resolution is because there is no direct revenue stream to the Capital Projects Fund, and so, we have to move it from one to the other. And that was all.
Can I ask a question? In reference to the Capital Projects Fund, is that like the 3,000 Rijland?
Yes, it's everything that we, so, back when ESER money started coming in, back in 2020, we started using Fund 60 more, because you could track where your capital projects were. So, as we were doing the different projects for, it also has your UNIV projects in there. It has your, if we do a playground, if we do a fencing project, we're doing, I think we put the heritage, if you're doing big projects, that goes into Fund 60. And so, there was a revenue source when you had ESER money coming in, but there's no ESER money coming in anymore, so we have to transfer it over from one to the other. Some districts have Fund 60 as a line item on their budget levy, on their levy. We do not. We have Fund 10, 20, 30, 40, but we don't have Fund 60. So, that, that, we have to do the transfer then.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any questions on policy? No, on finance, I mean?
I had a question also about that. I'm just wondering, why is it a resolution to move money?
That was the attorney's recommendation. I don't have an answer.
Follow-up, if I may?
Sure. You don't have to be acknowledged. Yes, I know.
It's just very random, like, because you're the accountant, right? And you should be able to move from one column to another.
It's a resolution that, that directs me to move that dollar amount, because it's a substantial dollar amount from one fund to the other, so that you're not in a negative in the fund at the end of the year. I know it seems logical.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, policy.
Oh, can I add one more thing?
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry. Just to piggyback on top of that, the, the fund transfer is in the budget also. It's in that 32-page document. The resolution is also a formality on top of that, acknowledging and giving me direct direction. So, it's kind of a double, a double due.
I guess it's just safety.
It's safety, transparency.
Transparency. Thank you. Okay, now, policy.
Yes, that's me. Okay, so, today, we met, and we looked at Policy 810, which is Connection with the Community. That was our first read. So, we looked at it, we talked about it, it'll come back next month for a second read. Then, we looked at some brand-new policies that are coming down from our service that we use, which is called Press, and it's like a publication of the Illinois Association of School Boards. And so, they kind of draft the new language for us, and then, we talk about it as a committee, right? And then, we decide if we're going to adopt it into the district policy. So, there was some brand-new policies there that we looked at for the first read, so it'll come back for a second read. We discussed Policy 530, which is the, looking at the current nepotism policy, which has been on the books since like 1997, I think. And so, we're looking to update that, so we're talking about that, so that'll come back next month as well. And then, there's some policies that we're looking to approve tonight.
Thank you. Anyone has any questions on policy? No? Okay. So, yeah, we had a very good discussion on that. Legislative report, that's Mrs. Butler, she's not here, so, correspondence.
We had one email and one physical correspondence.
Thank you. Okay. Public comments. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to follow the guidelines outlining Board Policy 2230. Seeing none. Action items consent, in the consent agenda, items may be removed from the consent agenda under request of any one member. Items not removed may be adopted by general consent without a debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the board. Anyone?
Yes, Caballero, I would like to remove Item 15D, the fiscal year '25 amended budget.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, can we please have a motion to approved items A through H, or through G, including A through H under G, except D, which is the approved FY '25 amended budget? Can we have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second. Okay. Rocko?
Ironay Jimenez?
Aye.
Steinfeld?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Palace?
Aye.
Caballero?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, so, we move now to either have a discussion or decide to vote on Item D.
So, I just had some questions before we, you know, moved to approve. It's an amended budget, so it's the budget that we've been working with the whole school year. But looking at the document, the big Excel document, specifically pages 30 through 34, that's where it lays out the EBF, Evidence-Based Funding Spending Plan for this year. And looking, you know, at the document, there are three strategies identified for using those funds, and then, three priority investments as well. And so, I just had a couple of questions about some of those. So, one of the strategies that were identified for using those EBF funds was to maintain or decrease the average class size. And so, my question was, have we decreased the average class size from the previous year?
Yes. So, I'm not sure if you, if you saw my responses to your questions initially, but I will, I have them in front of me. So, yes, we, our, our class sizes have naturally decreased over the years due to our declining enrollment, and our goal in that plan is to maintain or decrease the class sizes, and that has been accomplished, on average, across the district. There could be some classrooms that are bigger year to year, just based on enrollment, but on average, our class sizes have been maintained or decreased slightly since last school year.
And so, it's decreased slight, slightly, naturally, based on decreased enrollment. Have we, as a district, done anything to intentionally decrease those class sizes?
By meaning adding FTEs or adding classrooms?
Sure, yeah.
So, we have not. We have not had a need, based on our enrollment, to add classrooms to our current, we, if we add a class, for example, last year, we had to add a couple of special education classrooms due to student need, but as far as enrollment numbers across the district, we have not needed to add additional teachers based on our class sizes.
So, what number would trigger that need? Like, is there a threshold?
There is. We, you know, in our contract, the teacher's contract, it's 28. We try to, we generally maintain much less than that. Our goals are between 22 and 24, but we do have some classes that go above that, we do have some classes that are below that.
Okay. Thank you. And then, another strategy was to increase time and attention on specific student groups. And I did get your response via email, and so, now, I'm reading it into the, into the meeting, right, for, so that the people at home can know, because we're not going to post this email, right? So, that's why I'm asking the same questions. So, did we increase time and attention on specific student groups? And if so, which groups?
Yes, so, so essentially, when you look at the EBF plan, that it, our focuses are on low-income students, EL students, and special education students. Those have been the primary allocations for our EBF plan. We know that students may be in multiple subgroups, and we also utilize that Tier 1, so, for example, adopting a literacy curriculum and all of the curriculums that we've discussed over the years, since EBF passed, so EBF funds went to those, and all of that supports all students, including the subgroups that are, we consider to be priorities with our EBF spending.
Yes, thank you. What you said makes sense, that a new curriculum would support all students, but these funds are specifically for these specific groups, right? So, it's not, it, it seems to me that it's not increasing time or attention to those groups by adopting a new curriculum for everybody, right? Does that make sense?
Yes, but we, we address through Tier 1. Obviously, we also, as I included in my communication, was all of the, this is focused on this year's EBF, but you can go back and look at all of the positions and all of the resources that have been added since EBF started, and those have been prioritized around EL, around our special education students, and around meeting all of the EBF elements.
Thank you. Last one, I think. Yes. So, the three prior, one of the, no, the three priority investments, excuse me, was to increase or to hire additional, it says EL core teachers, special education core teachers, and intervention core teachers, or backwards, core intervention teachers. So, my question is, did we hire additional from what we had the previous school year?
Yes, so, we did not add additional EL positions, although one was unfilled, that was filled, and we added two positions for special education, as I mentioned, due to the needs of students, and then, one social work and one dual-language position were added last year.
Thank you.
I move that we adopt D.
Any second?
I'll second.
Okay, I, eh?
Ironay? Jimenez?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Caballero?
Aye.
Palace?
Aye.
Steinfeld?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, any public comments? Individuals appearing before the board are expected to follow the guidelines outlining the Board Policy 2230. Seeing none. Board member comments? I guess, I just want to congratulate the staff that was involved in the play. It was phenomenal. It was a really good experience, so thank you to the parents and volunteers, and especially the staff, and of course, the students that did an amazing job, so please congratulate it, congratulate them on our behalf, or on my behalf. It was a really good experience, so thank you for all the work that you are doing.
Yes, sorry, I had a comment, Caballero. I want to say thank you to the board, and thank you to the superintendent and staff. This was a great meeting. I will continue to ask questions for transparency, so please bear with me. If you are getting frustrated or tired of hearing my voice, you know, I certainly hope my fellow board members will also ask more questions, and I invite community members or whoever, fellow board members, to email me. My name is AdrianaCaballero@BSD100.org. We can have a conversation. I love talking about this stuff. I'm a policy wonk, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, let's see. Where am I? Okay. So, I guess, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
Second.
Who's second?
Me.
At eight, no, 7:50? You said 7:50?
Yep.
Oh, 7:50.
I said that a long time earlier. It's only 7:50.
Rocko? Ironay? Jimenez?
Aye.
Steinfeld?
Aye.
Gonzalez? Aye. Caballero?
Aye.
Palace?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, for being here on the summer evening. I appreciate it. I know it's a lot, especially if you're离far, so thank you, we appreciate it. Have a good rest of your summer.